Call this meeting to order. Please follow your heads for the invitation. Please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Mr. Avich? Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Most to excuse Councilman Mr. Avich today for being out of town would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting of August 3rd?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and pick your supporter there. Any discussion on the motion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We go to audience comments and any non-agenda items. When we come to an agenda item, I will come to ask if there's anybody in the audience, being you're in another room, please speak up. Is there anybody who's not on the agenda who would like to speak to council at this time?
Um, I would believe. Um, I'm Haley Fortuna. My address is 36260 Madison Street, Richmond. Good evening, everyone. My name is Haley Fortuna and I am incredibly proud resident of this city. For those of you who do not know, myself and some friends organized the Richmond Unity March Against Racism two months ago on June 17th. From the very beginning, I was completely transparent with both the city and the Richmond Police Department about this march and my intentions. As I believe I made clear, my intentions were for our small community to take a stand against hate and stand in unity with our residents of color during these incredibly difficult times. I again want to extend my thanks to John Moore, Emily Allen, and Jamie Green for meeting with me to discuss making the marches safe as possible. This, of course, was a first priority of mine. I want to thank Richmond PD, Richmond Lennox EMS, and Richmond Fire for ensuring our safety on the day of, and of course Richmond Community Schools for their support. Over 150 community members showed up with open hearts and masks to march against racism and hate. While over 150 voting members of this community marched on the right side of history, none of them included our city council. I emailed the city council three separate times in regards to the march. One of these emails was sent a week in advance explaining the march proposal and my intentions. Two of these emails included requests for city council members to participate or speak at the event as they are our elected officials. I did not see one Richmond City Council member marching alongside of us. Not one city council member volunteered to speak out against racism, which is all I asked them to do. However, there were city council members, including our mayor, standing far back from the crowd, not participating, silent. Not one city council member even emailed me back declining to speak or explaining why they couldn't make it. I did not hear one word from any member of the city council after the march either. I'm here to remind you that the city council is elected by the residents of Richmond and over 150 of them were literally at your door looking for leadership and guidance and you refused to show up. I want to be clear that I love this city. This is why being in action from our elected officials hurts so much. We need to hold our elected officials accountable. I will remind you of the mission statement of the Richmond City Council. The city of Richmond is dedicated to promoting a high quality of life for its residents by providing municipal services and addressing community issues in partnership with its citizens, businesses, and neighbors. On June 17th, council members chose not to address community issues and not to do so in partnership with their citizens. Not one member of the city council lived up to their mission statement that day. They are a representative, our voice in local government, and it is completely unacceptable that not one member of our elected city council was willing to publicly condemn racism or even respond to my email asking them to. I understand that the city council is nonpartisan, but this is not a partisan issue. Unity, condemning hate, is not a partisan issue. And if you think for a second it is, then I want to be clear that you do not have my vote in the next election. I'm standing here today to ask for a formal apology, but not for me, for the voters of Richmond, Michigan, who marched to your door looking for their elected officials to stand with them against hate, for unity, and for equality. These are your residents, and on June 17th, you failed them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that'd like to make comments to the city council at this time?
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
None.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have six this evening. The first one being consideration of second reading and adoption of ordinance number 166, fireworks ordinance. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider giving the second reading and adopt ordinance 166, the city Richmond fireworks ordinance. This ordinance would prohibit consumer fireworks on all days other than those that are specifically outlined in the revised state law. Those days would be New Year's Eve, the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day, six or seven days leading up to the Fourth of July, depending on when the Fifth falls, and then the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day. The council at the last meeting gave introduction and first reading to this ordinance. It also cleans up quite old fireworks ordinance that were currently on the books that referenced old state law and state-led public acts. Since our last meeting, I have had one person contact us. Mike Troutman from Pyro Joe's Fireworks contacted me and emailed a letter that I did forward on to the council and also printed for your table tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
Make a motion to give second reading and adopt ordinance 166, the city Richmond consumer fireworks ordinance that will limit the number of days consumer fireworks are allowed.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I read Mrs. Troutman's, or Mr. Troutman's, letter, and if possible, I would like to add a VI to C, the, under, Section C prohibited, conduct, violations, fines, and exceptions, on the 1A VI where we have our exceptions, and to add the good old days weekend, Friday and Saturday. I thought her request was reasonable. It's a, it is like a timed tradition and almost a ho, it really is a holiday under normal circumstances here in Richmond, and I, I would believe that would be acceptable to add those two dates to our ordinance.
Discussion on that? The only concern I have is, is our police department is taxed that weekend, as we all know, because there's thousands of people here. I don't know if, now that we're going to bring this down to what the state says is okay, which is around 12 days, I think, 11 or 12 days total, will people get wild and crazy and be blowing it off, you know, good old days weekend, beyond the noise and the fireworks that are blown off on Saturday evening normally from the festival? Would it be too much, all in, you know, Friday, Saturday, all in two days? I don't know. I'm a little concerned, but had administration, had you had a chance to talk to anybody, John, to see how any of the administration felt about adding those dates?
I talked to the chief about it just briefly today. Certainly, I think we will make whatever works for council. Certainly, most of our officers that weekend are stationed up near the festival grounds. We usually have one officer that's left on to patrol the city. You know, there's one car that's kind of quote unquote, the, I can't remember what it's called, the...
Complaint car.
The complaint car. Thank you, John. The complaint car that takes all the complaints from everything else. You know, usually it's a pretty quiet weekend throughout the city, other than the festival. Not that there's anything wrong at the festival, it's just a lot of activity, you know, a lot of street closures, a lot of that sorts of things, so we have a lot of people up there. I mean, I think we could make it work, but again, we could also see, how does this work? And does this increase the number of fireworks on those weekends? You know, we could always amend it later.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah.
Okay.
We didn't come to a decisive answer today.
Yeah.
Today, just in a quick talk.
I have no issue adding that weekend, and if it is something that becomes a problem, we can address it later.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then we really need to have a, an amended motion. So what number was that, Jamie, that you wanted to turn that into?
So it would be C1, and then where, because those are the exceptions, so it would be, then there's a, the last one is V, it would be a VI.
Oh, you're looking at the resolution.
The actual...
The actual ordinance, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
That's where the change...
She's correct, and it would be the Saturday and Sunday of the weekend following Labor Day.
Okay, did you say B?
Yeah, so, so when you're in...
B4?
I would say it would be after, because all of these go in succession, so V or 5 is the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day weekend until 11:45 PM on each of these days. So this one would be the Saturday and Sunday immediately following Labor Day until 11:45 PM on each of these days.
It's a Friday and Saturday.
Friday, Saturday.
Sorry, Friday and Saturday, sorry. I was reading...
Yeah.
I don't want Sunday.
Sorry, yes, no, not Sunday. Sorry.
Time to relax.
Okay. Okay, is there support to the amended motion?
Support.
I'll support, yeah.
Okay, okay, we have, any other discussion on that? Okay. Any audience? Would Michael like to talk?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mike.
This is, yeah, Mike Troutman, Pyro Joe's. I think if you're gonna do the good old days, because it is dark so early, you don't really need the 11:45, you could probably back that up. I think you can get everybody happy, and then if you want to enforce the ordinance, like later on, because I have some questions, uh, this, there is a noise ordinance in the city already.
I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding on this.
Yes, there is a noise ordinance.
Is there a fine attached to that ordinance already?
Yes, but it's difficult to enforce. What we've found is that, that it's...
Well, then, then how is this new ordinance? I mean, I'm all for this in the city. I, I think it's a smart move, but I, I'm just curious, how are you gonna enforce? You have a noise ord, because I read the notes from the other meeting, it seems Tim is right, it's this late night stuff, it's the stuff at midnight, 1:00 in the morning, very obnoxious, and, and I agree, somehow that's gotta be curbed, but you have a noise ordinance, I don't understand, so how many?
There's a lot of our, our noise...
Because I've been written on the noise ordinance since 2012 on fireworks. And I guess, my point is, if you say zero, then how are you gonna enforce this one? This is what, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm for this, I'm just, I don't know how it's gonna work. I have people, I know people in Warren, it does not work. I don't know what the answer is, but I, I'm just curious how, because, because if we had a noise ordinance, we can already write citations, then why aren't we doing that? And then if we think we're gonna do it with a new ordinance, I was curious how you're gonna do with that?
Okay. Sadly, we're on a phone system, it's very hard to understand, at least for me, to understand what's being said or asked. But I believe what it is saying there is, we already have a nuisance ordinance, which is, noise is included into that ordinance. Why are we not using that versus having the new ordinance? Because we, the state has come up with a new law, it says that we will allow only this time, it's, they left it to the individual communities to come up with their own ordinance to supplement their ordinance. And in our case, we have chosen to say no other days unless you get a permit from the city council. That's why, Mike, it, it becomes an ordinance, and I'm assuming it would become, according to the state law, I believe it's a $1,000 fine?
Correct.
That they have said we shall implement?
Yes.
So our, our normal noise ordinance, or our nuisance ordinance, does not have that in it. So we are following state guidelines to regulate the shooting of the fireworks.
Okay. So then that goes back, how do you, how do you enforce it?
Because it's very easy to, to determine whether or not somebody shot off a firework versus the noise ordinance, some of the sections in our ordinance talks about decibel levels, you have to prove that your, that your meter has been calibrated recently. Noise ordinance are historically very difficult to enforce.
I see, it's not really based on, on, on some other thing that's an equal noise?
Right, it's, essentially, Mike, from, from an administration's point of view, it's, the fireworks are either you are doing them or you're not doing them, where the noise ordinance is also a factor of how loud, how loud are, how loud...
Oh, maybe a safety component, maybe it's something in there too.
You know.
Because, you know, I don't know what constitutes, I guess it's just a subjective, obnoxious noise, if it, I don't know, I, I was just curious how this can be enforced. I don't disagree with it, I just, I know we have noise ordinances now, and I did not know that, so you're saying the current ordinance over a nuisance or noise cannot, you cannot write a ticket for fireworks unless you have this separate ordinance for?
No, I'm saying it's difficult to enforce, a noise ordinance versus a fireworks ordinance where you either are or you are not, very simple terms, yes or no, are you lighting fireworks off? The noise ordinance is this function of how loud are things, you know?
All right. It's, it's, I understand that. My, my other issue is the townships, if, you know, and, and, I mean, I went through last meeting's notes, and it was, was, well, we get the townships to join in, we're gonna create a zero tolerance, and I don't understand when people are shooting guns in the townships and all the other things are going on in the townships. If a guy is target practicing all day, which happens, I happen to live in Lennox, I hear the guns all the time, I don't really care, but some fella can shoot guns at 1:00 in the afternoon, but if you shoot one piece of fireworks at 1:00, you get a $1,000 fine, and that's what's being proposed, and I, I just, can you explain that?
I was asked to share the, our ordinance with the townships. Whether or not they choose to enact something out there will be up to them.
And we don't allow firearms shooting within the city limits.
I understand, have the township to do.
Yeah, well, we can't, you know, Mike, we can't speak for the townships. There's a lot of things you can do in the townships you can't do within the, the city limits, you know, so...
It'd be a real push to get the townships to join in. I, I don't understand the logic. Again, if it's a noise issue, then, then maybe there's an ordinance after 10:00, like any other noise, or something like that, but in all our zero tolerance, I thought was a bit much, knowing what else is going on in the township.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no, I, I'm just telling you that in, in town here, I, I think it is a good idea for a lot of reasons not stated in public, but I think, I think it is. And, you know, as far as our business, this, what actually goes on in town is a, is a very small percentage, it's, it's a very negligible amount. Most of the stuff that would be in town would be during the legal days anyhow, so, that's it.
And like I said, councils decide that we're willing to listen to anybody who would like to shoot fireworks at other times, if there's special events.
Right.
You know, if there's a, you know, an anniversary, or a birthday, or a wedding, or something like that, we're willing to listen to that and make those decisions throughout the year. We don't want to just cut this off. We understand that it's part of celebrating.
I think in town is, is, it, that's a very fair compromise, I think that's a good compromise, I think that's a good deal. Even when I did things in town, you know, I'd give John a heads up that those were gonna take place, that, you know, we didn't have anything to really go by, so I, I think it's a good plan. I just was curious how it would be forced, I didn't realize the nuisance ordinance couldn't be used, or it sounds like it, it was hard or couldn't be used as a noise ordinance for fireworks. That I did not know.
Yeah, very difficult. I've been involved in that, and, you know, you have to actually record the sound to realize, you know, what decibel it's at before you're gonna walk to a court and say, hey, would you prosecute this person for noise? So, very difficult. This makes it very simple.
Well, would it entail, a complaint comes in, and an officer goes out, and then, what is the plan? Will, will he go and ask?
Once the ordinance is adopted, we'll work on that.
Okay. I, I guess that's it, that's...
Okay. Thanks for your comments, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else there to talk to this?
Uh, no, there's not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. Any other discussion here? We would first vote on the amendment, of course.
Correct.
But any other discussion? Okay. Uh, there's been a motion made to amend. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Now we go to the, the main question with the amendment. Is there any other discussion on that? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. That will be put up on our website?
Yeah, I can do a news release on that, it'd also be published in the paper.
Mm-hmm, and maybe we could give a copy to Mike so that he can give it to...
Absolutely.
Any of his people.
I, I did, when he called last week, I did email it to him, but I'll email him the revisions once I have those completed tomorrow.
Yeah, great, great. Okay. Moving on, consideration of special event request, Moose Lodge/Michigan Dressers. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dresser Motorcycle Club to conduct their 33rd Annual Toy Ride, or Toy Run for Kids on Grand Trunk between Main and Howard on Sunday, October 4th, 2020. The main change from last year, this is the second year that they've been, that they want to do this run here in Richmond, and the main difference from last year to this year is that due to social distancing, they'll be going to the state to get permission, once council approves it, of course, first, to close a section of Grand Trunk after the run, utilizing snow fence, and essentially from the Moose Lodge down through Shepherd's front there, they would like to keep that section closed for the afterglow party, so that people can social distance better while they celebrate after the run. Other than that, very similar to last year, we would close Grand Trunk from Main Street back to essentially where the Grand Trunk curves as it goes out to Howard, from, I believe, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and depending on when people start to go home, they may open up some of that, you know, not the snow fenced area, but some of the other area of the street may be opened earlier as, as determined by when people go home. The route is the same route that they used last year, and I have emailed out to the fire chief and police chief today, as the mayor reminded me that last year they did help with kind of getting them through some of the intersections and stopping traffic to get them turned down certain streets, things like that, and so I'm sure we can accommodate that again this year.
Okay, thank you. I believe there's somebody here from the association that would like to speak?
Yes, there is.
Hi, my name's Robert Bartholomew, I'm with the Michigan Dressers. I know this is the second year that we are doing this in Richmond, but we wanted it to kind of hit home a little bit more, so we chose a local resident.
Julius Schwager.
Julius Schwager, so we hope that we pull a lot better, more of a local turnout and give the whole town something to celebrate in a time where it's hard to find things to celebrate.
Okay. Does council have any questions?
I think everything went well last year.
Or me?
I believe everything went well last year.
Went very well last year, yeah. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table here. Is there a motion before this, further discussion?
I make a motion to approve the banner request for a small, oh, that's motion two, but I can make that one real. For a small banner promoting the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dresser's Motorcycle Club's 33rd Annual Toy Run for Kids to be placed on the grass near Grand Trunk and M19 beginning on September 18th, 2020.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Okay, I believe we did the same thing last year.
Mm-hmm.
With the banner.
Yes, correct, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Any comments from the public on this motion?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Back to the table? All in, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We go back to the front page there.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special request, event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dresser's Motorcycle Club to conduct their 33rd Annual Toy Run for Kids, including the closure of Grand Trunk Avenue from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday, October 4th, 2020, and the use of Grand Trunk from the Moose Lodge to Shepherd's for the reception following.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Need discussion on this? I'll tell you, it was a great event last year, I went on it, and it was very well organized. The Dressers did a great job, the Moose did a great job, and I think with the COVID, it's warranted to close off the front. We were stuffed back there. You know, there's, it was, for a first year, it was very successful, I felt, and I, I believe that what they're saying is there should be a whole lot more people there, bikers and otherwise, participating, and especially with a local recipient of the funds. So I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully, we have good weather that day. Any other comment? Any comment from the audience?
No.
Okay, back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We wish them well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Amendment number three is consideration of the purchase of combination sewer cleaner. Mr. City Manager?
The fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget included $415,000 for the purchase of a combination sewer cleaner truck. The vehicle replaced the 2003 Vector brand combination sewer cleaner truck that we've utilized for several years. The combination sewer cleaner, basic function is to clean up debris from the sewer, and also has a high-pressure, high-flow water pump and hose reel to pull settle debris out of the sewer pipe to a manhole, also will help us when we're digging down for like a water main break to keep the hole much more smaller than using like a back hoe, that sort of thing. So very versatile piece of equipment that the Sewer Fund owns, and well worth the money. This year, the DPW evaluated a total of five different manufacturers sewer cleaners in June 2020, which included a thorough demonstration of the equipment in the field and operation by DPW staff. As a result of those demonstrations, they're recommending the purchase of the Super Products brand sewer cleaner for a number of reasons. If there's questions on that, our Public Service Director, Jim Gutsinger, is here tonight to answer those questions. Also, we would, they are requesting that they utilize the revenue from the sale of the existing sewer cleaner to install an auto lube systems on the new sewer cleaner truck in the amount of $8,500.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements under Section 64-53D and authorize $422,043.42 for the purchase of a Camel Max combination sewer cleaner truck with Freightliner chassis, Granville Auto Lube from North River Truck, with the expense charged to the appropriate line items within the major street fund, the local street fund, sanitary sewer, and water funds. fund, sanitary sewer and water funds.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion? Definitely something we budgeted for. It's a large item for us, but, but as you said, used heavily by our DPW. It doesn't pick up leaves too, does it, what?
Not cost-effectively.
I, I just.
Not yet, no.
I just have.
Leaves that are in the sewer.
I have a question. Is Vector, like, the name brand?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's what I was, I was.
Even though for all these years, we've used it as the term for that type of truck, it really is, no, Ford.
So, it's like Band-Aid?
Correct.
Oh, adhesives or Kleenex?
They're commonly referred to as Vectors.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, they were what, like, the big manufacturer on the block for a long time and now there are other brands starting to kind of work into the.
Clarification that it was.
Yep.
Uh, the same thing, just different.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Jim, uh, would you like to chime in on this?
Uh, well, certainly, uh, as you had mentioned, this is a, a significant purchase for the city and, uh, I'll admit, I kind of had some anxiety over, you know, we don't, we don't want to make a mistake, but we, uh, felt we were as thorough as, as we can be. The crew almost unanimously, uh, preferred the truck that we got and the, the one who had a different opinion certainly liked this truck. It just wasn't, uh, maybe, it was, you know, number two versus number one, but there were, he would, he would, that particular individual was happy with any truck. And, uh, I did call references. E- every one of these trucks that we tried out, quite honestly, is much better than what we currently have. That being the case, we don't want to, uh, uh, pick any truck. We want the truck that's going to work best for us. Um, Romeo and Marine City are both, uh, local, you know, close communities that utilize this truck and they, uh, had good, have had good experiences with this truck. Actually, Marine City, their, their previous truck was also the same brand and that was from the 90s, so they're familiar with this brand and have had no issues with it. So, after all of that, you know, we are, and I've asked my guys multiple times to see if they, anything's come up or they've had any reservations about this truck at all and they've all been a hundred percent in support of, uh, this purchase.
Uh, Jim, what, what year was the, is the vehicle that we're replacing?
Uh, it's a 2003 Vector brand.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it's up at the top there, I missed that. Okay.
Hey, Jim, I had a question, um, on the cabin chassis, uh, is that something that was automatic or was that something you guys chose or, um?
Uh, we, we did choose that it's not automatic, but that is, uh, almost the standard now. Very few communities go with the single axle, rear axle, which is, we currently have a single rear axle truck now. There's just a, a lot more capacity with the tandem. And again, so the, the cost difference is very small to go from a single to a tandem and, and, uh, but we had initially thought we might want to stick with a single axle after trying the demos out and putting some thought into what's best for the future and efficiency. We did, we are requesting a tandem axle truck.
Great, and I would, uh, agree a hundred percent with you on that. And then, uh, the model of the, the chassis, being a Freightliner, did, was there any other offers on any other type of chassis, Kentworth, uh, Peterbilt, all those type of things?
Uh, you know, uh, this Freightliner tends to be the most, uh, cost-effective. Actually, every, uh, manufacturer we dealt with initially, their standard is this Freightliner, actually the same chassis, maybe a little different spec. Uh, I didn't specifically ask Camel if we could go with different options. Some of the manufacturers we talked to had other options that they said were basically the same price. We've had, we did a review and recently purchased a new, uh, snow removal truck and it's a Freightliner. We were comfortable with, with that product, the, the electronics in it and stuff. And so, we didn't have any reservations, we're sticking with that same chassis.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure we weren't cutting any corners or costs, uh, based on, uh, um, just trying to get the cost down for quality. So, no, it sounds good.
Any other questions of the DPW Director while we have them?
I, I just would like to, um, thank you for the care that you put into this and I, I'm pleased to hear that it, it's going to sound strange, but that it gave you anxiety because that means you really, um, value our tax dollars and how they're being spent and you're valuing this piece of equipment. So, I just thank you, Jim, for your, you and your team and, um, and the care that you put into in choosing the equipment. So, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience?
Uh, no, there's not.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote.
Allen?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Stravich? Rindell?
You.
Rick?
Yes.
Horne?
Yes.
Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have another motion here for a, uh, to sell the, uh, old Vector. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the city's existing combination sewer cleaner to be sold to the highest bidder or traded in, whichever is greater, with the revenues posted to the sanitary sewer fund equipment rental.
Support.
Was been made and support. Any discussion on this item? Will this appear on the, is it called the Mitten? Is that where we've?
I believe so. Jim, do you want to comment on the, where we'll post this?
Um, more than likely it will go there. I know, uh, our last experience with Mitten was not as good as previous, so we're concerned about the viewing on that site, so we may choose a different site. Uh, you know, we did get an approximate trade-in value from the, our distributor, local supplier, and so we're, we're going to intend it would be to use that as our minimum starting bid. But it, but it will be advertised electronically somewhere.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of adopting Resolution Number 2020-8, polling location change. Mr. City Manager.
Council's scheduled to consider adopting Resolution Number 2020-8, which would approve changing the polling location for Precinct Number Two, uh, to this building. Uh, currently, both Precinct One and Two voted the community center, uh, but with the increase in the number of registered voters in the community and then in more, in particular, uh, this year with the, uh, requirements for social distancing, the voting booths and social distancing people inside the precincts, um, although we were able to handle the August primary, uh, we have very deep concerns on handling the November presidential election. Uh, pretty much the six voting booths that we had for Precinct Two, uh, were the max that we could have in, in that. And I think, um, if you look at, uh, the memo from, uh, City Clerk Karen Stagel, uh, we used, uh, 20 in Precinct Two for the last presidential. So, you know, 14 more voting booths last year than what we have as a max if the social distancing standards stay the same. Uh, certainly, uh, the City Clerk did a nice job putting together, uh, the memo on the social distancing, but there's also just the growth in general is making the presidential elections at that facility to be very difficult. Um, and so, uh, what we're recommending is that we go back and use this building again. In particular, we had used this room and possibly the room behind, uh, to allow us to get people in and out. Um, if we don't, I think we're going to have very long lines outside in November. Um, and, and so with that, our recommendation is for, uh, adopting this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-8, which will approve changing the polling location for Precinct Two, beginning with the November 2020 election.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. It just makes sense with everything that's going on. Um, I think it's just a proactive way of doing things.
I, I concur and with the, the building of the 50 new houses in the subdivision or, and, I mean, one's already occupied, so we're going to grow fast in Precinct Two.
Definitely. No, it's a good plan. Real good plan. Any audience comments on this?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of the designation of a MML voting delegate. Mr. City Manager.
For 2020, the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention will be held as an online virtual conference. The conference is scheduled for summer, September 29th through October 2nd, with the league's annual meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 29th at 3:00 PM. Uh, the MML will be putting out more information on the convention at a later date, but they're asking, uh, municipalities to appoint a, uh, delegate and alternate, uh, to the convention.
Thank you, sir. My understanding is you ladies would like to continue?
Sure.
As MML delegates in the same positions you were in 2018?
Yes.
Okay. City Council, did, did anybody else want to fill that boat? Okay, a motion be in order then.
I make a motion to designate Jamie Green as a city official MML representative to cast a vote on the city of Richmond at the virtual annual meeting.
Support.
Was been made and support. Any discussion? Appreciate you doing that, Jamie. Any audience comments?
No.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also need a alternate representative. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion designate Emily Allen as the city official MML alternate representative to cast a vote for the city of Richmond at the virtual annual meeting, should the office representative not be available.
Support.
Was made and supported. Thank you, Emily. Any discussion on this item? Again, we appreciate that. Any audience comments?
No.
Okay, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank you guys for doing that. Item number six is consideration of establishing a city manager evaluation committee. Mr. City Manager.
Council's scheduled to consider establishing the ad hoc city manager review committee. Uh, the last manager review committee was established on July 15th, 2019. Uh, as council's aware, we've been working with that committee on kind of a list of priorities and a couple of different, um, issues, uh, regarding the city manager's office. And so, the current makeup of that committee, which was, uh, Mayor Ricks, Mayor Protem, Mistravich and Counselor Lafore, uh, would ask that, uh, they be reappointed to the committee if the council's comfortable with that, uh, for at least one more, one more year to kind of finish out some of the projects that we started.
Is there any comment before a motion? Would anybody else like to serve on that committee? Then we'll go for a motion.
I make a motion to establish the ad hoc city manager review committee for the purposes of coordinating the annual performance evaluation of the city manager and reviewing the city manager's employment agreement and making recommendations to the city council on changes in the compensation package provided to the city manager, with the committee to expire on December 31st, 2020, with the following counselors appointed to serve on the committee: Counselor Lafore, Mayor Protem, Mistravich and Mayor Ricks.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion on that? We think we're making, you know, good headway here on, you know, the items that we had talked about and we just, we're hoping we're all on the same page and, and working well together. We are hoping that you would support this and let us continue to, uh, take care of.
Try and finish up.
The job here, so we appreciate the motion.
And I think in a, in a year, I think it'd be, it'd be good for, you know, the committee to change and I think it's a good thing and, uh, I think everybody on council should be a part of that in the future.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Any audience comments?
No.
Okay, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager. Sir?
Uh, just would like to mention that, uh, the Crossroads Community Church that have been doing the food drop sometimes in the park, uh, we're able to confirm, uh, kind of short notice that they will have, uh, a shipment this week, uh, so this Saturday at 10:00 AM, they'll be doing a food drop in BB Park.
That's the 22nd?
The 22nd, correct.
Okay, 10:00 AM. Okay. Uh, council comments. Rob?
Nothing.
Dennis?
Nothing.
Jamie?
Nothing.
Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
John?
Nothing.
Well, what's on the calendar here? We, um.
Oh, the babysitting class, was that this week?
We have a Tifa meeting still on the 26th?
Yes.
Okay, that's right here at City Council, uh, chambers at seven o'clock on the 26th. That's Tifa. Um, the Recreation Board will be meeting on September 1st. It's Tuesday at seven o'clock, right here at City Hall, again. And then the, uh, Gleaner's Food Drop will be at 10:00 AM, is what I have written here, on Wednesday, the 2nd.
I'm sorry, that's 11:00, I wrote it wrong.
Is it 11?
I apologize, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's the, uh, September 2nd, Gleaner's Food Drop, 11:00 AM over at the BB Park. Uh, the library will be closed on Saturday, the 5th, uh, for the Labor Day weekend. Of course, City Hall, library and community centers will all be closed on the 7th, which is Labor Day. City Council will be meeting at its, uh, regular hours, which is seven o'clock, here at City Hall on September 8th. That is the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. And I believe that is it.
I have one addition to that, I apologize. Uh, the EDC will be holding a special meeting on the 4th Thursday, which I believe is the 27th.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, new owner of Old City Hall, I believe, will be submitting his downtown revitalization.
Very good. Okay, what time is that meeting at?
Uh, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM here at City Hall. The EDC will be meeting on the 27th. Okay, is there anything else that we need to add to the, uh, calendar? Okay. All right, there's, uh, no closed session this evening. Is there any other business for the city council? If not, who would like to make that adjournment motion since Mike's not here?
I make a motion to adjourn. Support.
There is, there's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.